No, you're good.
Okay. I'd like to call the Park and Recreation Board's study session to order for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike, if you would, roll call.
Sure. Cindy Suze?
Here.
Barb Tuzley?
Here.
Mike Moffett?
Here.
And Dave Beesold?
Here.
Okay. As part of our study session tonight, we've got some business topics, and we're going to jump all the way to Item C, The Grove, which is a new park amenity, because the gentleman from Althoff Homes is here to discuss that. And if you'd like to come up, introduce yourself, give us what you've got.
Yep, I'm Kevin Pascoe with Althoff Homes, 851 Wicker Avenue, St. John, Indiana. So I'm here tonight to get the conversation started on our park amenity that we're planning to put in this subdivision, which will be called The Grove. We're in the early stages right now, so we just kind of wanted to establish a dialogue between ourselves and the park board and also Mike throughout this process to try and optimize that area to be used in a way that is beneficial not only for us but for the town itself as well. So previously, we had one meeting with Mike. I'm sure he filled you in on the details of that. So in the concepts that we currently have, it's showing having a small veterans memorial area, because we know that the town's in the neighborhood to try and put something like that in. So we just wanted to try and get something on paper to present to you, you know, kind of get the creative juices flowing on our side and your side. So if that appeals to you or you have any other thoughts on that, we'd definitely like to hear that. Otherwise, there's plenty of open space to work with there if you want some additional amenities. If you want me to, I can go through in more detail on the concept plans.
Sure.
Okay. So we'll start on that second page with the trail perspective. So as this currently sits, we've got about 1.5 or 1.4 to 1.5 miles of just separate trails. That's not including the entire sidewalk network that we have there. So it's winding through a lot of that northern area and then gets its way into the western portion of the property and then also runs along 101st Avenue and along the utility easement. And we wanted to go ahead and stub that there in case future connectivity comes along, because we know Lake Central owns the land over there. So if they decide to put a school or some other facility, then they have a connection point right there. Then if we go to the next page, that's the one that dove a little bit deeper into the veterans memorial area. So at the bottom, we've got...
What page are you going on?
This is on page three, yes.
This?
Yeah.
This?
Yes. So at the bottom there, you'll see that there's three existing memorials around the Midwest. I think two of them are from Indiana and one of them is from Iowa. So there's something a little more modest. We don't know what the town exactly wants. I mean, I know there's kind of this amorphous idea of having a veterans park. So you could do something kind of small that pays tribute to each of the branches of service and then also displays the flags from all the branches as well as the country and then the state of Indiana. I could do some sort of engraving, a seating area, some sort of additional landscaping could be installed there. It'll have ready connection to the trail system as well. We'll run right past it. Then if we go to the next page with the trailhead, we just wanted to kind of propose that because this is a larger area that has the extensive amount of trails that are not only going to be on this property but also have connectivity south towards the gates and then further west towards the Renaissance neighborhood as well. We also have a bridge there, so this is kind of a little bit more of a scenic area. So we were thinking about putting in, again, extra landscaping, some sort of signage which can either tie into the subdivision itself or the veterans park. That can be sort of like an entrance monument when you cross that bridge as well. And then we're also proposing a pavilion here as well. And then the final page is just for some landscape buffers. We would take care of those ourselves under the HOA for the subdivision, so it wouldn't necessarily apply to this conversation today, but I'll just go ahead and point those out. So if you've got any questions or comments on here, any at all are welcome. That's why I'm here.
For the Veterans Museum, I guess I'd like to see something a little bit more modern. You know, all of these things were probably put in in the 50s to 60s, 70s. I am aging myself. But something that kind of represents today's view and today's lifestyle. I don't know about anybody else, but I just wanted to throw that, having a father who died of war injuries, World War II injuries in 1961. You know, I've been to many of the parks actually that are listed on here. I just think updating and modernizing things might be an interesting way to go.
Do you have some sort of, like, design elements that you're thinking of? Okay.
Mike, Cindy, either one of you got any questions? I guess my only observation is, okay, and I'm going to use the one in Munster-
Okay.
-as just the one that I can picture in my mind.
Yeah.
Are we talking something, I'm not talking about with the helicopter, but something along that line where it's actually a walk-by, a stop-by, and a type of thing where we could honor, let's say, all the veterans from perhaps all the conflicts that have gone on since?
Oh, we're certainly open to that. Again, this was just an initial run-through, just to try and get something envisioned. So, yeah, any ideas that you have, we can certainly look into. I could come back to a future meeting for sure, have some new plans drawn up. So if you want us to base it off of that, we'll have to do some more research on that, obviously.
Right, well, I just, you know, like I say, I've been to that one, and it is kind of the concept that you're talking here with a little parking area and then a walk-through and a walk-around, and it does connect with some of the other walking trails that are over there.
Yep.
And I've, you know, I've enjoyed it. It's pretty elaborate. I mean, I think it was a public and a private enterprise that kind of put that all together. So I think it's a little bit more involved than maybe what we're looking to do, but I like the concept. And, yeah, I mean, I personally not sir, but I think that any way, shape, or form, we can honor those people. It's important that we never forget.
And Tom Clark, who's the curator for the Veterans Museum in Sherrville, has the history of all of the deceased in the area. And I would... Am I not speaking loud enough? Nobody's ever said I wasn't speaking loud enough, trust me. I would gladly furnish how many, like, the names and stuff from him, what he has on record.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly work that into a future iteration of this.
I'm a little lost on the whole thing, like, because the first I've heard of this. So is this something you guys are proposing that Althoff is going to build?
Yes.
Or are you wanting the town to build this?
So-
Like, what would this cost us? Like, what's the catch? Or is there a catch? You guys are wanting to build? That's what I said, I don't really-
Well, yeah, so we're here, again, we're in the very early stages of this. We haven't even been in front of the planning commission yet because we're still finalizing some things. We just wanted to get the ball rolling on the amenities and the open space here. So we're certainly willing to install much of the infrastructure that's going to be needed here. Obviously, it's going to be a back-and-forth process as we finalize exactly what you guys are looking for and, again, how elaborate we do want to make this. And also, as part of that, would be deciding who's going to be in charge of the maintenance of that. So if you want it to be turned over to the town for additional park property, we're certainly willing to do that. We're also willing to take it under the HOA ownership as well, who would be responsible for the maintenance. So I don't know if that's, that's obviously not something that either one of us need to commit to right now, but that is something to keep in mind as we go forward.
I guess the best thing you could do is, if you, and I'm all for it, is to give us what you're looking for from us directly. You follow what I'm saying? Not necessarily money-wise, but if you want us to form a committee to help you with this, is this something you guys would like to put together yourselves and run by us? Because ultimately, it would have to go to the planning commission. It would have to come here. So, I mean, there's a few steps that have to go along the way.
Right. I would probably have to take that back to the office and just run that through a couple of my superiors, just to make sure.
Okay.
I would say that's, there's certain possibility, certainly possibility for that, especially if you're very interested in utilizing this area of the property for a memorial.
What would be our timetable? I mean, you were saying, obviously, you have to go before the planning commission for the whole subdivision in general at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're looking, what, '25, '26?
Yeah, hopefully, we'll start working on approvals this year, and then it will most likely spill over into '25.
Okay.
So, yeah, we've got a little bit of time, obviously, to work on this. And, you know, I'll just coordinate with Mike, or if any of you want to coordinate directly with me, that's perfectly fine. So, yeah, just keep me up to date on that.
Anybody else got anything? Mike, you got anything?
No, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, it's good. I mean, if it was something, you know, that we were going to, a veterans memorial thing, then I do think it's something that, you know, we should do.
Right, I agree.
And stuff like that, so.
No, I agree.
But, no, I mean, it's a, it'd be, I think it's a decent piece of property that could be used into, you know, some sort of positive park amenity that may not be just strictly, you know, a playground setting and stuff. It's the closest, again, the closest one playground-wise is Gates Park-
Correct.
-over there. So, and Founders is not too far away, but...
And also, depending on the direction that you want to take, if you want something that's a more modest memorial and it still leaves space open here, we could certainly also put other play equipment as well. Like you said, you know, there's a playground not too far with Founders Park and then the Gates Park. So we're also very willing to look into alternative park amenities in there as well.
Yeah, one thing we talked about in our meeting was like parkour equipment.
Yeah.
That's it. You know, that our, New Lennox Park District recently had installed something like that over one of their parks. So, but yeah, something a little unique, a little different.
Well, three and a half acres is a fairly decent-sized piece of property.
Yes.
So, no, sounds good.
Not for nothing, but you could do, you know, instead of doing a veteran, not to take away from veterans, of course, but we do have a veterans park here, of course. This is something that could develop into something a little bit more. But if you wanted to keep your veterans memorial park here, then you could also take a look at possibly doing like something for police and fire, you know, as a tribute to them and the service for the community and all of that as well. So, just a thought.
I know where you can come and look at nice statues of the police and fire.
Well, there you go, yeah.
Safety Village has-
Get the little dog out there, too.
Safety Village has them.
It really does look like a wonderful idea, for sure. Maybe my two cents would be, because I understand parks, you do not want to enter off or have it very close to a busy street like 101st. But if it was going to be, if it was going to be a very successful veterans memorial where people are going to come and visit, I can see why people wouldn't want to have a lot of traffic coming through their subdivision to access it.
Right.
Maybe just a thought, if there was a possibility of being able to have access to it off 101st, if there was any possibility at all, just to consider if it was?
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can certainly look into that to see if we can have a alternative access. It might be a bit tight just because of the Beaver Dam ditch there. Kind of comes right up to the corner there. So we're almost forced to have the entrance be through the subdivision, because there's also not another stub street in Renaissance either. So your only point of access is either as a pedestrian on the trail network or off of Park Place to go into the neighborhood.
And the nice thing is, is that if it's all planned out before, people buying there know that that's a park, so.
And let's admit, we put a very large Catholic church in the middle of a subdivision and...
I think they built the church and then the subdivision came.
Yeah. And so-
So long as the homeowners are there, yeah.
It's not nothing that we haven't done before.
Full transparency, they're going to have a little more traffic. That would be, I think that's a good answer.
Yeah, I think certainly more information as we move forward would be great. And even if it's in an email form to Mike or something where you guys can kind of settle on where your partnership would be on this and what, you know, your level of that would be to give us a place that we can land so that we kind of know what you're thinking and then we can kind of chew on that and see what we would like to be a part of, so.
Yeah. I think really, going forward from this meeting, is just anything that you guys would think? I mean, this was just our initial concept of what could be there, but we really want to just get feedback from people in the town, you know, from Mike and then from the board, everybody here. And then we'll go from there. I mean, it's not something that we're wanting to take full ownership of every single design aspect of it. We're going to want to accommodate the vision that you guys have for this particular amenity.
Because we would probably have to include that in our master plan, right, Mike?
That would be a good idea, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're in the process of doing that now, so the quicker we can get some of that information, we can at least put it on our five-year plan for the next five years so that we can incorporate that.
Okay.
Be great.
Yeah. Yeah, again, I can take that back and I'll hopefully have some information for you tomorrow then, that I'll forward to Mike, and then I guess we can go from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then we'll go back to the top of the list, and we'll go back to Gates Park Improvement Project. Superintendent O'Shea.
All right. On remote here is Dave Weber. He is part of Robinson Engineering. He has assisted through this entire process of the park planning of it and obviously the stuff that I've been sending to you guys and stuff. So, so we are, well, a couple of months ago, we, you know, approved the plan, and now we're getting pretty close to getting everything ready for the documents, et cetera, and stuff. So this basically is off the, after our last meeting the next day, Dave had sent me a variety of information for some cost estimate stuff that I forwarded on. Some of the biggest questions were about some possible cost savings, basically within the, within the cost estimate, or within the, yeah, the cost estimate that we were going to be ready to bid out. And the plan was to do the walking path first, followed by the hard courts and the soccer fields. So, starting with the walking path, you guys, you had seen what the cost estimate would have been, you know, from Robinson Engineering. And Dave, if you can, can you explain some of the possible savings that you were talking with me about?
Sure. So, first of all, good evening, everyone. Happy to speak with you tonight. Regarding the walking path, by splitting that from the rest of the project, one of the challenges was to kind of, to get the grading plans to meet up. And of course, the walking plan, if it goes first at a later date, the soccer path, the soccer fields would be developed and the grading for that. So in the end term, what I have included in the plans as far as the walking trail is a small shallow ditch on the north side of the new path to intercept any flow coming off of the open space and direct it out and around so that the water, one, does not puddle and, two, that it can, you know, doesn't go over the path itself. The difficulty or the downside of that is roughly figuring that just excavation alone, that's going to add about $28,000 to the cost, which, if it were seamless hand-in-hand, we would not have that. Now, a ditch isn't entirely necessary and from the sense that if the Park and Rec Board can agree that short-term, for the short-term, some ponding is acceptable until the project, which is to follow right behind it, kicks off and we correct it. It would be a short-term problem that perhaps we can live with. In addition to that excavation cost, you would have seeding, erosion control blanket and things like that that could be saved as well. So you may be looking at a total savings of possibly about $40,000, $50,000, just roughly talking. And that's simply because the projects are separated. If we forego the ditch, you could save that money, but two things, we would have to make sure that we follow with the soccer field project as soon as possible thereafter and in the time before that starts that the board would be, any ponding or drainage issues that might be temporary, that you would be okay with having it.
Quick question, Mike. The CDVG grant, how much was awarded to us on that? Do you remember?
Well, I believe, and that was just through email, the numbers that were going back and forth on, but I believe it was closer to like $84,000.
Okay. So then, the rest of that could be teed up for ARPA funds if we needed to.
And, yeah, again, and also-
So that way, we can get the project kicked off and get it done ASAP.
Yeah. And one of the reasons to try doing it separately, too, was because of the CDVG grants as well.
Right, right. But I think you're right. I think it was 84 something or whatever it was.
Yeah, and that was just based off of emails that I received on it and stuff, so. Any, so, any other, you guys have any other questions with the, just the walking path?
What is the length of the walking path? Does anybody know?
It's a little over, we have, this would be over half than what it is now. Do you know the length, Dave?
Let me compute it here real quick. I don't know the length up the top of my head, but I can convert my number. One sec.
No, it's almost half, looking at it.
I think it's just over 1,500 feet, I believe. 1,500.
So we're talking about spending 200 grand for a third of a mile? Is that what I understand?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be the current estimate, estimate of the current prices.
Okay, no. And we did receive the 84,000 CDVG grant, and I think we projected the project at, I don't know, pretty close to 200,000 when we projected it.
Okay.
Yeah. And that was a while ago. It was like, over a year ago.
We just don't reach this with a buck sixty.
Pardon me?
Just don't reach this with a buck sixty.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we don't have to go with that ditch, which would be a savings, and we don't have to deal with some of the other improvements. So we could probably get that under 200, but, okay. And Mike, do you think that that would be something, if we got bids out, we could get done this year?
I do. I do. I mean, the plan would be, obviously, to, again, as we said, do this first, get it going, and, I mean, we could finish it this year, too. I don't see why we shouldn't be able to unless, Dave, you think differently or whatnot, but, but yeah, I think that's something that we can do, unless, Joe, you think otherwise, or...
Hey, Dave, could, well, this has to comply, and we have to conform with the CDVG requirements as well, just so you know, because we do have CDVG money involved with this. So, with respect to the bid specs, how fast would it be to get bid specs out on this thing?
You know, the one thing that I, we have started specifications on this. I would have to convert them to CDGB. That is something overlooked, but that shouldn't be too difficult. But I would say if we make a decision on how we want to move here, we could be ready in two weeks.
That sounds good.
Well, we're not voting on this tonight, anyway. This is nothing more than a study session, so this could be brought up on the agenda for the, for the regular meeting at the end of the month.
Which, where is this actually? In Gates, is this?
Yes, this is around the current Gates Park.
This is to finish the bike path, correct?
Correct.
Just the bike path.
Now, when you come in to bring in all the basketball courts, is that going to mess it up? Like, will we destroy the path, or?
No.
We will avoid it.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dave.
The benefit is that the path is on the outer perimeter, so we will protect it and just prohibit any crossing on that path. Now, they have to cross a path at some point or another, but it makes more sense to go over an older path that's absolutely necessary and just plan on restoring a small piece.
Right.
And this, right, Dave, correct me, too, this also, this part of it also included the entrance off of the road, right, off of that, I think it was Pearwood Drive from the easement?
Um, let me... Oh, I know, you're, this, you're talking about connecting to the north?
Yes, yes.
This, I had that connection on the soccer plans, but there's no reason I can't put it into this project. It's entirely up to you.
No, that's fine. Soccer, no, the soccer project's fine. I have no problem with that.
Anybody else with questions?
Okay, and then on the soccer field side, this would be the soccer field and the hard courts that are on the, on the plan. So again, there's the cost estimate, and I, you should have in your packet, Dave had sent me some, a more formal document, a little before four o'clock. So I put that in your packet, too, so you should, you should be able to see that, little more updated numbers than the, the copy of the yellow sheet and stuff. So, anyway, so the big thing on here at the time would have been the stone that we would have underneath the soccer field. And the other thing was, the other thing was the piping. The tiles that we had underneath, originally, we had them at 15 feet apart, and Dave and I were talking about moving them 30 feet apart, just again, more on a cost saving. We would still have efficient drainage and still have, you know, the soccer fields would be in better shape than they would be now. The thinking, though, at the time, would, if we were to trim those two items out, obviously we would be saving a little bit on cost, but, you know, we would still have a solid, you know, feel, we just wouldn't have a, you know, a top-notch, you know, high school drainage system type, you know, type thing and stuff like that. So, so Dave, if you can, can you go a little more in-depth on both the stone and then on the piping?
Sure. So, for the design of the soccer field, the way, the way that we designed this was having 12 inches of modified topsoil, which is essentially, basically one-third sand mixed with the topsoil in order to promote a well-drained soil. The stone that Mike was referring to was, in addition to that 12-inch thickness of modified soil, we had a drainage course underneath there of four inches of open graded aggregate that then went into a field tile system, if you will, lower than that. Looking at this, and this is a Cadillac version, it's, there's always a give and take, but I think that the soil itself would function very well, just being modified with sand, and that we could forego that subgrade. So in the cost estimate I provided, and I apologize that the items were not numbered, but the fourth column down is aggregate for under drains. That is that drainage, four inches of subsoil rock at the cost of $241,000, or 241,500. So that's a substantial cost that I just don't think it's providing $241,000 worth of benefit. So knowing how French drains work, I think that- So, knowing how French drains work, I think that that would be safe to eliminate that layer for that cost savings, and, and like Mike said, we currently have the spacing of those field tiles throughout the soccer fields at fifteen feet. If the current cost of that line item is about three-quarters of the way down at three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, which we could cut that in half and, uh, you know, save a hundred and sixty thousand dollars if we went the thirty-inch spacing rather than the fifteen. Those two, it, I think we're, you know, we're not gonna quite get the Cadillac, but we get the, you know, the, the best model that you could possibly get short of that, but at a savings of approximately four hundred thousand dollars.
That's a lot of money.
You will have a superior field, um, just not to the standards of, uh, professional grade. So, those, those items, I think, can safely be cut. Um, knowing that it's four hundred thousand dollars, I think it'd be, you know, value engineering, that it would, would perform well enough, uh, to justify that cost savings. Um, as far as, as far as the other items, there's uh, basketball, soccer, I'm sorry, uh, the asphalt courts, which is pickleball, tennis, and basketball. Um, those items, I would recommend staying as-is, the, the coating, the color coatings and the striping are kinda pricey, and actually, the, the, the nets and posts for those items are, are included in here. For the four pickleball courts, the tennis and everything, I was estimating that it was, um, second from the bottom, forty-two thousand dollars, so I really don't necessarily recommend making any other cuts, but uh, those two items at aggregate layer, which is a sub below the modified soil, and reducing the amount of field tile drainages would be a good way to cut some of the cost out of this project. Now, in contrast, if we essentially eliminated the modified soils and the undergrain system, and basically just re-graded the fields as unmodified topsoil, you have a potential savings of, of twice that. Matter of fact, uh, I got written here, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is, is what we're spending on the soccer fields themselves to modify the soil and provide the undergrain.
Yeah, Dave, if, if you could basically kinda give us a, I mean, we've got all the numbers here, and my head's spinning, um, basically-
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, kinda give those as options, so we could take a closer look at those.
Okay.
So, option A, option B, option C, and then maybe carve out the pickleball and basketball courts separate, so that way, we really just kinda, a look at those numbers specifically, so maybe we do an à la carte kinda thing, as opposed to just, you know, trying to figure out which way to go with that, because right now, I mean, I, I just saw the numbers just a little bit ago, when, when Mike sent them over, so, yeah, there, there's a lot of numbers.
Yes, um, I'd be happy to do that, I'll put together a memo, breaking out the, the major parts, and giving you options with the pickleballs-
Yeah.
Well, with the asphalt courts and the soccer fields, I'd be happy to do that.
That sounds great. And then if we wanted to do the modified soil versus the non-modified soil as an option.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have a question, Dan?
Yeah, I just want a question. Um, is the soccer field just basically used by youth, except when we're talking, do we have any adult teams?
Uh, these are two, these can fit two full-size fields, so it can be used for adults, uh, but primarily youth, yes. And if it being used by youth, who would be used, um, you know, it would be, um, a lot smaller, you know, multiple fields into one. Uh, St. John Evangelist uses it, uh, we're planning on using it for our own soccer league as well, um, and uh, but yeah, I mean, we, we could do adults as well.
Just looking at what type of revenue, you know, if you want to how you're winning, if we need it, or how you want for the, you know, revenue coming in to offset the-
Yeah, we have, yeah, doing this way with the two full-size, you know, and you could, you could put two full-size fields down, there was options, was many options that you can do.
Your thoughts about, what, do we really need the Mercedes on here, or?
Um, well, I mean, of course, it's always nice, you know, you have the, you have the nice stuff, obviously, and stuff, but-
We spent so much money on this park.
Yeah.
I don't think we should be making big cuts. I mean, more piecemeal it, but we got one of the nice escape parks, we put in some really nice stuff.
Right.
We're talking, put some awesome pickle courts, basketball courts. I want this to be state-of-the-art. I want people in tenures when I come like, that's one of the best fields around.
Right, well, yeah, and if, I mean-
I don't wanna cut too much out on-
No, 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 I get what you're saying.
Especially the drainage and aggregate, because nothing worse than your, your gang get drained out.
Yeah, correct, and you, you know, it's gonna be better than what it is now, yes, you know, if, if you did the top-notch stuff, then, I mean, probably long-term wise too, you, you're gonna definitely get more, more use out of it, and, and, um, uh, you, you will, you will be able to play right away, which is a nice thing.
Because you always look at something that was built ten or fifteen years ago, it's like, yeah, we made shortcuts, ah, it's too late, no, it's-
No, correct, correct.
Very true.
You don't wanna be penny-wise and dollar-foolish. You know, you were, I know you were pretty well involved with those really beautiful fields over there off Calumet and Dyer, what's the aggregate they use there? Do you, do you know what they put down there?
Um, that was, I mean, that was more like-
Seen the drain well, too.
Yeah, that was more like just limestone material, um, uh, that, that was, that particular stuff was nothing fancy, um, uh, on those ball fields. However, we did do a lot of it, and we did do a lot of it over a number of years, too, to make it really, you know, really thick, yeah, and, um, to, to really help the drainage and stuff. Um, those fields actually were there first before, then we, then we actually changed them, modified them, and then built everything, um, around it. Um, the warning track that's out there too, was a special, special material that was, was used and stuff, so. Um, uh, so, I, I know those particular fields do well, they do pretty well, I mean, we did add a lot of drainage over there, we did make some changes that will, uh, that could help all the players play. The agri-line, in, uh, in theory anyway, I mean, it, it is better than, you know, baseball dirt, clay, in, in terms of rain, it doesn't, it just, it, it holds it better and stuff. Uh, I mean, I've been other places where they've actually, you know, shot backed water off the agri-line and, you know, took it right out and stuff, and it, it worked and stuff, but, um, um, but, I mean, that, that, I would say nothing particularly fancy with that stuff, that was just your regular agri-line material, ball field, softball material, that, you know, you can, yeah, probably get a lot of, uh, landscape places. It's really the drainage that helps it, you know, the stuff that's underneath it, well, that's the stuff that really helps it, because if the water has a place to go, then it's gonna be gone, right? If, if, if it's not going anywhere, then that's where you're gonna run into trouble, and it's gonna puddle, and it just, it's not gonna, it's not gonna fully function the way, uh, the way it's, uh, supposed to work, so.
Can we have an estimate of how many children, adults, use this? I mean, because it's, it's one point four million dollars, I'm sorry, that's a lot of money to me. Um, and I realize that, you know, we wanna have the best and greatest, but there comes a point in time of the usage versus the cost, and is it not in proportion to, you know, what a standard would be? I mean, obviously-
I mean, like, right now-
Too much in the winter time at all.
Well, correct, I mean, if, if that was the case, you might as well, you know, do turf, you know, then you can pretty much use it all year round, you know, snowplow often, use it in the winter and stuff. Um, I mean, right now, the usage on it, probably right now, is not where it should be. Um, I mean, we have, what, forty people, forty-five people so far signed up, kids-wise, right, in the soccer league, and then the-
They're gonna start a league, though, correct?
Correct, so, but this also opens up the opportunity for, you know, tournaments too, some outside, you know, outside tournaments coming in and being a site, maybe not being the main site, but, you know, being a satellite site, in a sense. Um, you know, we've talked about, you know, wiffle ball, you know, for instance, or we've talked about doing other things out there a, as well, so, you know, the, the soccer field being a soccer field, yes, um, but, you know, I think it's, at this point too, would be used for multiple, um, sports or events, stuff like that, you know, it would be out there.
This, this is including the basketball courts and the pickleball courts.
Oh, no, yes, this is-
Right, and that's, Mike, that's why I wanted it broke down, so that way, we could all see.
Because I, because I know one of the things right now, everybody wants pickleball courts, everyone's begging for it.
We get calls-
This is including that.
Yeah, we get calls all the time for pickleball.
This is, this is the basketball courts, the pickleball courts.
That's why I wanted it broken down.
It was just a soccer court.
And then, option A, option B, option C.
I'm getting a little nervous about this.
No, that, that's what, like we're saying, everything.
The soccer, the, yeah.
I could broken down too.
Yeah, because it's, there's, there's a lot of numbers in there, so, yeah.
The soccer, altogether soccer's like low over eight thousand, according to, to these estimates.
But that's why I was trying to get you to, because you were thinking of soccer, and I'm like, no, it's not just soccer, it's all that other stuff that, pickleball, I think, everyone's like, when are you gonna pickleball courts? I'm like, well, we got it painted, here, but-
Yeah, but, people have used them, I don't know how many-
If you look at these courts, there's always people on these basketball courts, I mean, always.
Yes, yes, you're correct, correct.
And in the winter.
Night and day.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's always the question of, do we have the money to pay for this?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we would go, once we would get the bids, then that would be the next step, is going through it and seeing what we can use. There are, there is ARPA money that's supposed to be set aside to, to help pay for this as well, and then-
What is it?
And then going, and then going through, you know, what, what we have a, as well and stuff like that, so.
I said, get it in quick.
That's, that's the point of the, you know, getting the bids and stuff, to be able to, you know, bring it back, study it, have, you know, Dave Weber study it too, um, to make sure everything's aligned, and then act, you know, act from there. Because, I mean, right, you can't award a contract necessarily unless you have the money and stuff too, so.
Seems like a reasonable idea. Hey, we gotta have the money first.
I thought so.
So I love the idea, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, that having a, you know, like a A, B, and C option, because it's, I, I, it's difficult for me to understand all this as well, and understand when I'm buying for what dollar, so we have the, we were able to put it together.
And maybe, 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 maybe I'm, I'm saying it wrong, maybe I shouldn't say option, I, maybe a phase or something like that, I mean, however it's gonna work best, it needs to get done, obviously, and to Mike's point, we don't wanna do something, I don't wanna use the word I'm thinking of, we don't wanna do something on the cheap, and then regret it later.
Well, and you also don't wanna do eighty percent of a project, thinking that, okay, I'm just gonna pay for twenty percent in a year and a half, and then twenty percent turns into fifty percent, right, and that's a major error, right? So, so the understanding those, what, their startup costs of every project, if you don't finish it, it comes back and it really costs you sometimes way more than you bargained for.
Right.
So, sometimes completing projects, when they're large and efficient, is a good way to go, some, sometimes, usually, so, but, understanding those numbers.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, for the bidding options, if we did everything as-is, then do that as, there was the main option, and then, Joe, you're talking about the options, then the next option would be the, you know, eliminating the, or, um, stone, you know, as a second option, and then, you know, we, you know, going down as you mentioned before and stuff, but I think doing it like this is fine, so that way, we just know too, and then, and then that's, yeah, that's what we have to, you know, to see, make it work with. And if sometimes we can't, then we can always reject the bid, right, and then go back, re, redo it again, the bid, as far as like another phase or something like that, and, and, you know, build it that way as well, so.
Because, I mean, it's gonna come down to your money and your cash flow too.
Yes.
In terms of what, what the Parks Department has.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so, we, we definitely need to take a look at that. You know, where, where this fits in, and what next year's budget, and your five-year capital plan, how that all works into it too.
Correct, correct.
And more importantly, that's not the final phase.
Right.
There's more to come.
Yeah.
So, I mean, based on the, the sheer numbers that we're looking at now, when you include it all, we're rapidly approaching three-plus million dollars for everything. You include the skate park, you include the walking path, you include the soccer fields, you include the hard courts, and then eventually, the restaurant sla-, or restroom slash pavilion. Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's, it's a step, and we have to take the steps, I think, uh, and, you know, importantly, and, and, and make sure that we, we do it in the rights, the right way, but at the same token, be smart with where this is headed, because at the end of the day, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, and it's in one demographical area of our town.
Well, the, the idea was on its opposite side, because we have, we have Heartland Park, but we've done probably millions out there-
Oh, yeah.
Over several years, many years, and the whole idea is, we need something on that side of town, because the east side's saying, we have nothing, we have nothing over here. So that's, that's why we've been putting a lot towards the east side, and trying to give them what we have on the west side, so you go to different sides of the town, we have very nice facilities on both. Because the one down here, I mean, we have some, you know, the structures there with the restrooms and everything, it's, it's, it's a nice setup.
I live on Park Street, and we don't have a park.
Working on it.
No, no, please, just, just sell those two properties and give the money to somebody else.
Any other questions concerning this?
I think the, the only thing I have then too, I mean, basically, I, I think we're in somewhat of a agreement and stuff, you know, right, doing options for the pickleball courts, or hard courts slash soccer field, as we talked about, but then on the soccer field, pretty much eliminating that ditch.
Correct.
At least with the, with the path, I would say, yeah, moving forward.
True. I think because we don't know the grand scheme of things, we don't know the timetable for the next phase, which would be the, the soccer field and all that, um, yeah, I mean, I think moving forward, if we start by continuing to complete the bike path, that's, that's, that's the place to start.
Yeah, and, and talking with Dave too, I think we, he had mentioned to me too, I mean, it's, it's realistic as far as like timing to, you know, to do, we could, you know, bid out one, two, back-to-back, pretty much, so we, everyone could, you know, see everything, but, you know, as far as construction-wise, it definitely would be, if we would start something here late fall into early winter, definitely would be, you know, going into next year's springtime and stuff, so.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Thank you, Mr. Weber, appreciate your, your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to item B, which is the park and recreation budget review. Okay, if you would elaborate there, Mr. O'Shea.
Yeah. Right, so, uh, I know at, at a study session coming up here with the town council, they're gonna be going over, presenting the budget as, as a town as a whole. Um, you know, we thought this would have been a good opportunity to present this now, we go over it, um, here at the, at the, at the study session, so. Some of the stuff is stuff I have sent to you guys kinda each meeting, just more as an attachment, it's more than anything else, um, just so, you know, you could kinda keep up with it and stuff as, as best as possible. Um, so what I basically did, um, uh, in the packet there, I printed out just, I think it's like five, uh, five sheets of slides, basically, that would have been on, on a PowerPoint, and I just kinda copied, um, what their proposed budget for 2024 was, um, uh, that was being submitted, basically, um, and then to review at the, at the, at the council meeting. Um, so, uh, I, I'll just kinda go a little, kinda page by page there, basically, um, and then if you have any questions, just, you know, let me know what you, what you think or, um, or ask away and stuff like that, no problem. So that first one is at Civic Park, and, um, you can see, I, the, the line items are listed out, what those line items are, uh, being supplies, engineering, insurance, so on and so forth, and then what each proposed amount was for the year. Um, now, how these numbers came about, just so you know too, is, um, uh, we took the actual numbers, you know, through July, uh, yes, through July, and then, um, took the actual numbers from, uh, August of last year through December of last year. Um, you know, I do have all our expenses itemized out as far as, you know, when invoices come in and stuff like that, you know, took a look at everything, projected everything off, based off just simple math, basically, to come about what, you know, what to propose for this upcoming year. Mostly the items for Civic Park, for instance, are, are, are basically this, similar to what they were, um, you know, into, um, for, for 2023. Um, and the biggest, the biggest increase with it, basically, would be the other improvements, um, showing that thirty-eight thousand one hundred mark, um, and then down below were kinda the improvements that, um, I had submitted over to the town council office, um, just going through what we had on our park inventory list, park master plan list, uh, our, I'm sorry, park, um- list, park master plan list, uh, or, uh, I'm sorry, park, um, um, five-year pla- or the town five-year plan list, and then just going through various things that I, I've seen over there. Now, these can change, these are not set in stone by any means, um, these are just, you know, numbers that come up with, um, just to go over, some of those would have been, you know, uh, the painting of the two pavilions, um, the bird netting of the two pavilions over there, um, walking path connections, uh, um, hard surface connections going to the parking lot over there to the tennis court, um, and then, you know, looking and trying to get some connections over to the basketball court, to the rookie field, to the T-ball field, you know, so on and so on and so forth. So these are kind of just numbers I put together, um, somewhat, like, you know, I put, actually put the locks in there as well, these are just numbers that I, you know, got either quotes on, or, um, uh, or did the best kind of estimate altogether, so, um, this is how Civic Park would look as of right now, uh, it being pr- presented over, uh, to the, to the town council. Most of the, most of the stuff with Civic Park, um, you know, the, 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 the water and the gas and electric, that's mainly has to do with the, the ball fields and the, uh, with the watering of the ball fields and the lighting of the ball fields, um, you know, building repairs and maintenance, either stuff with the, with the fences out there, sanitary services for the, um, portable restrooms that we have on site, we don't have any engineering necessarily there, um, other supplies are example of basketball nets, or, um, you know, uh, toilet paper for the restroom, stuff like that, so, um, so that was the first one being presented over at Civic Park, and, and, uh, we, I, I have sat down with, uh, with Joel and, um, other, um, uh, people who are from the town, town hall and stuff like that, and, you know, gone over these numbers too and stuff, so, um, anyway, that was the first one for Civic Park. Any, any questions with that?
Anybody have a question? Mike, percentage, uh, from, over from last year?
I have all that, I have, I honestly have all that, but, you know, I, I actually did not print it out, um, last year for Civic Park, so, I did not print it out, last year for Civic Park, uh, we were, uh, or for 2023, it was at fifty-eight thousand, I believe, total, so the increase had to do with the other, other improvements, um, and, uh, I think gas and electric and water were bumped up a little bit, just based off the usage for, uh, for this year. My, uh, I'll send out my twen- uh.
I think the biggest change you had was, you know, in staffing, was basically a part-time maintenance person, is what you were looking for.
Yeah, correct.
Is that correct? Everything else is remaining the same.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, um, and the eight-by-fourteen sheets, Dave, that I have attached there too, this is actually everything for 2023.
Right.
Actuals and stuff like that, so.
So that's the only reason I ask, cause it seemed like it was a considerable percentage increase.
Uh, yeah, yeah, um, and, basically, the biggest thing be the improvements for it, the hard, the hard paths, hard paths and walking and bike path and stuff like that.
It's a one-time expense then?
No.
Nothing's ever one-time.
No, I mean, the thirty-eight thousand.
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be a, a variety of, of, of things for the thirty-eight thousand, but like, in 2025, I mean, the plan would be to improve it again with hopefully thirty thousand, thirty-eight thousand again.
Oh, okay.
Doing something else, you know, just, a lot of, a lot of this, and even with the two-two-zero-four for the park and rec stuff, was just to, um, you know, get, get to a budget where I think it was a little more, um, uh, efficient, I would say, with what the, what the needs are, uh, with the park and rec needs would be more than anything else, so.
So you're planning on your, this is just, excuse me, you're gonna continue just planning on yearly improvements then today?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and the stuff that would, it was, that is within our park inventory, and that will be within the master plan too, and the five-year, five-year plan that Joe was talking about, so, um, so the next page was the two-two-zero-four, which, um, again, was, uh, uh, different categories between, uh, more staffing-wise is category ones, category two, more supplies, um, fuel, category three being more, um, services, category, category four being more, um, smaller capital improvements, um, so this did, this would have gone up as well compared to 2023, uh, the biggest thing being proposed, as Joe just mentioned, just asking for, um, a part-time help for more on the maintenance side, more to help with, you know, that kind of the garbage and just general park checks, playground checks, uh, it was a part-time position that we were proposing, um, being at like, I believe it was twenty hours, uh, a week, uh, park, helping with park rentals too and stuff, so, uh, the rest of, the rest of the numbers were just kind of put in together based off of the, um, you know, projections for 2023, um, remaining for 2023, and then, you know, playing out what we, you know, looking to do also in 2024, so.
Yeah, I know that, just to kind of give you a little bit of insight, I know that Parks Capital, um, were best projections for revenue for the next fiscal year, we're at about three-hundred-and-ninety thousand, we're, or you're proposing a seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-dollar, um, capital, um, projects budget, which would dip into the one-point-six-million-dollar reserve by about three mi- three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, just so you know.
Yeah, so that's that next page Joe's talking about, um, the four-six-one fund, park and recreation capital.
And that would be the, the park impact fees, so the park impact fees are down, you know, considerably, cause, you know, home production has slowed.
Correct.
Really?
Yeah, just a little.
So, uh.
Just a little.
You don't live off Ninety-third, do you?
You'd never know.
So, on, on this, as Joe just mentioned, so this is proposed actually, yeah, seven-seven-eight-six-one-two, uh, altogether, including engineering and park improvement projects. Now, this initially, this initially, um, number was within the previous five-year plan for the town, um, this particular number was, uh, projected with a different, with some different, um, projects, so, uh, I kept that number as is at seven-seven-eight-six-one-two, and then as down below, I, I listed out some possible projects, just coming up with again, off the park inventory list, and off the town ma- or off the five-year master plan, uh, list as, as well, um, now, again, these aren't set in stone, um, these were just to kind of match that seven-seven-eight number, um, um, obviously, some of these, you know, uh, would be, um, stuff that we have talked about, example Prairie West Parking Lot was, is in their Lake Hills work, uh, being, working on their pier and the amphitheater and, uh, the path, fixing some of the path, I put a trail connection to Lindsay Park in there as well, um, the wiffle ball stuff in there that I was talking about before, but, uh, tree planting, um, various, you know, I have a Gates Park or Lantern View or Pat- Patnau Park, um, depending on, you know, how everything would shape and stuff, um, the, the goal, basically, as we've talked before, was to do everything one at a time, you know, do one project, kind of reset the budget, and then kind of, you know, go, go down the line, so, but yes, if we were to take stuff out of what we just talked about at Gates Park, then obviously this number would, would, you know, change and stuff like that, um, as, you know, as, uh, all impacts everything and stuff like that, so, um, so, uh, that was the initial capital proposal for the budget, again, that was based off the numbers that we initially had in our five-year town plan.
Okay.
The next page has three different ones on there, these are little smaller ones, community events, and then there's the Christmas events, and then the dog park is on there, uh, community events would, would be, uh, Freedom Fest, for example, uh, movies in the park, and then, um, other events such as the fishing derby, Easter concert, and, uh, Boobash event. This also would, would have been an increase from what, uh, this past community events year was, um, uh, mainly, mainly adding in, uh, the concerts more so than anything else, uh, we took a lot of that this year off of, uh, the two-two-zero-four, um, but, uh, um, and then Freedom Fest as well, we, uh, we bumped that up three thousand to, to, to sixty, but, um, that would be just a example of everything proposed for various, you know, large slash medium-sized, uh, community events. Christmas events, the two-five-zero-two was, uh, those were numbers were just, were put in there at eight and five, uh, for a total of thirteen, under supplies and other services and charges, um, that, those were more just numbers that were put in there, I know, with, working with Pat and Rebecca and stuff, we're going through some of that stuff now, um, for, for, uh, the, the Christmas events, and then the dog park, uh, that's basically just the supplies being, um, you know, the dog bags, uh, sub- Jason orders for key fobs, telephone, gas and electric, repairs, repairs and stuff like that, so, uh, so that's that one, and then the last page, um, there's four of them on here, the family garden, uh, this one was, uh, just a Patnau Park garden, this was put at two thousand dollars, basically, to, we did soil this year for, for that, uh, for all the boxes, which I think really helped, I know we've gotten a lot of, um, positive, um, feedback on, on, on that for the garden. Farmers Market, uh, we had laid out there, uh, uh, biggest, biggest change of the Farmers Market was the possibility of continuing adding the live music, uh, as we, we've started now, and, um, but obviously that would also coincide with whatever our cash balance would be for the Farmers Markets, you know, i- itself, which, uh, we, which we have been tracking, and, and, um, this year we're, we're, um, uh, close to, uh, uh, we'll be, we'll be over for sure, or over in a positive way, uh, not, not in a way, but over in a positive way, uh, with, um, with all the vendors that we have, and hopefully increasing, you know, with vendors and, and adding more, adding more to the market and stuff, so. Park Gift, uh, that was pretty much left the same, the refund slash refunds, those pretty much was left the same, and then the last one was just the Park Memorial, two-five-zero-nine, which is our memorial, uh, bench program and tree program, uh, which is pretty much was the same as, as last year, so, uh, so that's basically all the, uh, the funds in the sense that we work with, um, obviously the biggest one being the capital and the park, um, operations one, the two-two-zero-four, and then the Civic Park being the, the third, the third largest one, so, um, again, that was everything, uh, averaged out basically from the actuals through this year, and then, uh, going back and looking at actuals from last year, um, you know, I, I, again, those eight-by-fourteen sheets that I have, uh, on here for you, um, these are the same stuff that I've been emailing to you guys when we have our meetings, um, as well, just so you can kind of, uh, go along, but these are basically, um, exported, uh, numbers out of the end-of-month report, so once August comes out, I'll be able to update that, kind of go through the projections, you know, a little bit more and, and see where everything sits, so.
And Mike, who does your, um, actual budget to actual reports?
Um, I do.
Okay.
I do, yeah.
What is the total, a total for all of this?
Uh, I don't, I, I would have to add it up real quick for you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Which I can, and I can email it out to you, I have the totals for, well, I actually, on the last page I didn't put any totals on there, I guess, but, um, I can send that out to you.
What was the question?
The totals, the total of everything.
I'm kind of a bottom-line girl, you know?
Oh, for Parks and Recreation?
Yeah.
For Parks and Re- Recreation, Fund Number Two-Two-O-Four, it's five-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-seven-eighty-one and twenty-eight-nine cents.
You go to Park Two-Two-O-Four, it's at the bottom?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the total, okay. Okay, thank you.
And that has a current fund balance of three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand.
And our, I, I guess, when we start voting on this, what our income, this is our expense, what our income is.
So the income.
Ah, the man has his phone handy.
Thank, I, I've been working on the, I'm like, my eyes are like, you know, ready to just fall out, um, so Parks and Recreation, Two-Two-O-Four, revenue projections provided by the Clerk Treasurer were five-hundred-seventy-seven-thousand-nine-hundred dollars.
Okay.
And we have a fund balance of three-hundred-and-thirty-eight-nine-ninety.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we want to approve this, or do we want to recommend this for the, to the council?
Yeah, I mean, the council, they wouldn't do any of the official approving of anything.
Once we, I think once we do the budget hearing, and we have the public hearing, which will be the twenty, whatever that twenty-sixth is, or whatever the council meeting, the, we're having the first reading, I think after that, then you guys can make a recommendation.
Okay.
Um, you know, just to, you know, that way you can, you can weigh in on it.
We don't meet again technically till the, the day before the town council meeting.
Right, right, so you could, you could weigh in on it in, you know, September, at the end of this, this month or next month, because they're not gonna take final action till the end of October, so.
And I'll have the, you know, the August numbers too, you know, that update I can send to you, so you can just, you know, go through it and take a look at it.
Well, and I also think that we have to look at our, our impact fee numbers for the year, or at least projected for the year, to kind of know what next year may or may not be, cause we're coming down from an up cycle, so.
Yeah.
We don't know what that number really is, this, we'll get a better barometer this year, I think, for what, what lies.
Of the four hundred homes have, have been built?
Yes, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. All right, uh, any other questions about the, uh, budget? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to item five, any and all, now we don't have a public comment section here, but we'll put that in as part of that, so if there's anyone here that would like to make public comment, please step up.
Mr. Cub?
I'd love to, you're welcome to speak to any of the topics I'm interested in.
I will mention that, uh, for Lake Hills, this is Mitch Day from Lake Hills, uh, we did do the spraying over at Lake Hills Park, um, I know I talked to you about that a little bit and stuff, so, um, the Frag Mities over, over by the, the, the path, but, um, um, and then, yeah, in the, yeah, in the, you know, I know, for the, some of the capital stuff, we, I did have a line item there for some Lake Hills stuff that does need to be done, so, um, you know, as we, as you guys review it, as we look at everything like that, you know, that stuff that I would, you know, want to look at as we move on, as far as like the pier, um, and the, um, some of the stuff of the walking path as well, and then wherever, go ahead.
I am sorry, I gotta go.
I'll see you later.
And Mitch Day, just, I guess, a couple of the other topics, I just was kind of curious, there was a, a resident just adjacent to the Lake Hills development who has a sixteen-by-sixteen gazebo, um, that they're trying to find a home for, that, uh, seems to me like it would be a great fit, uh, frankly, at the old abandoned water fountain play area, so I don't know what's required to move a sixteen-by-sixteen gazebo that appears to be very solid, um, but, uh, just want to make sure the board's aware of that, uh, that opportunity, and then, of course, I'm always interested in the two parks that aren't really parks, that exist within Lake Hills, and how they're gonna tie into the master plan. Thanks.
Yeah, and those are the same, those are the same ones.
We really haven't moved forward on any of that yet, because that's all part of the five-year plan, and we're adding things and subtracting things, so that's something to continue to consider. I've got nothing else, Mike, you got anything?
Uh, just one other thing, I, I do, I did some, we talked about the park and rec master plan last meeting, um, uh, I know Nicole's not here, but we were working on a letter, and we did send out a letter, uh, to some, um, firms.
So hopefully we'll have.
The plan is hopefully to have some proposals resubmitted there for September, that we can open and look at.
Yeah, cause we really gotta have a rough draft by.
Yeah.
November.
Yeah.
So we need to move forward on that quickly.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Well, Councilman Orellio, you got anything you might want to add?
I'd like to add is I do appreciate the, the deeper dive into the budget and the numbers we're going through and the thoughtfulness you're approaching this with, so, you know, money, it does not grow off trees, we all, we all know that, so I'm grateful you guys are thoughtful about the taxpayers' money, so, thank you for that, and the improvement focus on the gates, uh, and the improvement of the park, I think that's just gonna be a great asset for our residents going forward, so, I appreciate the time and effort, thank you.
Joe, anything?
Uh, no, not this evening, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, a couple of the board members are not here anymore, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, I'm looking at you.
Can't vote on a candidate, that's adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned.